Hi, I'm Doug Doherty with Hamilton Flourishing and we're just delighted today to be talking to another candidate who is running for city council in the city of Chattanooga, the engine of progress for Hamilton County. And the man is Dennis Clark, who is running for city council, District Five. If you don't know, March 2nd is the election date. We want everybody who's registered to vote in the city of Chattanooga to go out and vote. We don't want any more of this low voter turnout. That's not a reflection of the stewardship we have as citizens in a republic. We should take as much care of our vote as we take care of our money. So don't waste it, use it wisely. And just a word before we get started, Hamilton Flourishing is a nonprofit organization. And one of the things we do is try to educate citizens about civic affairs. And so we've spent a lot of resources, you're creating on our website, hamiltonflourishing.org, where you can actually go to it and find out about every one of the 36 candidates who are on the ballot for city council and mayor. There are 16 running for mayor and then another 18 running for city council. Only two people are unopposed that don't have opposition. So it's a big deal. We turn over, we're turning over, we're going to have a new mayor, we're going to have a new city council. It's all going to be a big deal. So don't miss out. In the past, some of these elections have been won with fewer than 800 voters in the council area. So let's not let that happen again. Let's have a, let's have a good turnout and get out and support the people you believe in. If you think this person can make a difference for you, your family, your grandchildren, your, your business, get involved and help them out and be a, be a voice for them. We're delighted today to talk to Dennis Clark. Dennis is running for District Five. Hello, Dennis.
Hey Doug, how are you?
I'm great and thank you for coming on this, which turned out to be a beautiful day. Tell us Dennis, a little bit about yourself. Where were you born?
Yeah. So first of all, Doug, thank you so much for the invitation. It's a pleasure to be here with Hamilton Flourishing to be able to share some ideas and to talk to your audience about why, like you said, why it's our civic duty to participate in these elections. But anyway, I'm excited. So I'm from Chattanooga, born and raised. I live in the Woodmore community. Went to Lakeside Tyner Middle School, graduated from Chattanooga School for the Arts and Sciences, attended Middle Tennessee State University for about four years and studied political science. Came back to Chattanooga after working for the Georgia State Legislature for about two years. I took a job with Tennessee Temple University as their Director of Community Relations. And then from there, I've just been doing stuff, just active in the community. But I'm a native and I, and I just, this is a community. My family is here and this is a community that I hope to serve on the city council.
Are you, are you married?
I'm not married, no kids. I do want kids. I, me and my mom were just talking about this yesterday. She goes, Dennis, when are you going to slow down so you can fall in love? I was like, you know, I love what I do. You know, so if, if you guys are doing any matchmaking Doug, please send, please send them my way.
Ladies, did you hear that? We have an eligible young man who's, I'm just kidding. No, we're delighted that you're here. So tell me this, we'd like to ask this question to folks. Where do you go to church?
I go to church at Grace Point, which is pastored by Marcellus Barnes, who I know you are familiar with, who does a lot of stuff with towns of unity and his youth foundation. It's a very great, it's a new church, it's been around about five years. My family are members of Mount Cain and Baptist Church, which is where I was, which is Tournay, Jordan, which is where I spent most of my childhood before joining Grace Point about four or five years ago.
Great. And what do you like to do Dennis for fun? What do you, when you're not changing the world, what are you doing?
You know, this is going to sound corny, but a lot of people don't know this about me, but I'm a classically trained violist.
Classically trained what?
Violist. Viola, like, yeah, straight, yeah, I played under Sandy Morris and Gary Wilks. And I went to MTSU actually on an orchestral scholarship with Dr. Carol Neeson, played there for about two years. So I do, I love classical music and I do that to decompress, you know, it's, it's heavy times. I do a lot of meditation. I listen to a lot of gospel music. Right now I'm listening to one of my friends named Chris Blue. He's got a song out called Just Fine. So check it out. He's, he was the winner of The Voice. What else do I do for, I'm a news junkie, which hasn't been the healthiest for me. And so I just, you know, all the noise in the world. So I used to watch the news a lot, but for fun, I don't even know what that is anymore. Like, I don't know. I just try to do a lot of mental health stuff. That's what I do for fun now, just tending to.
If you're listening to classical music, you're doing all right because I love to listen to classical music. One of the reasons is because it doesn't have an agenda. And in my kind of work, you can get spun up pretty quickly, this or that. So I, you know, I turn on DeBuse or DeBuse and I'm just happy or hung or whatever. So. Well, that's great. Now tell us, you're in District Five. Where is District Five?
So District Five is going to be your North Brainerd neighborhoods, which includes Woodmore, which includes portions of Dalewood and neighborhoods like Indian Hills and Galen Heights. We also, that District Five also includes Bonnie Oak. So that's like where Hillcrest is, Cherokee Woods. And it goes all the way up to Howie 58, which is the right side of 58, like Lake Hills or Washington Hills, Mimosa Circle in those areas. So it's a very linear district that starts to Howie 58 and ends kind of Northmore Road. We pick up some of the hip hill neighborhood off Tally Road. So, so airport, the airport is in our district. Branded High School is in our district, just to kind of give you a few landmarks.
You know, they give free rides to airplanes to everybody who's on the town council, city council. You know that.
They do what?
I'm just kidding.
I was like, what? What do you do? And like, if they're doing that.
I'm sorry, it's late. I get so, they're just late. Dennis, have you ever been in elected office before?
No, um, I mean, no, no, no. I was going to, I don't know if serving in our, as our vice chair of our party counts, but not in official capacity, no.
Why do you believe you would make a good councilman for Council District Five in Chattanooga?
Yeah. So I think leadership is about relationships. And I have a lot of relationships Doug, with people in this community who I've worked with, who know my work and who know that, who know, and they know my heart, you know, I'm endorsed by Tiffany Robinson. I'm endorsed by former city councilman Ron Swafford. I just found out I got endorsed by the Realtors of Chattanooga, the Real Estate Association, the SEIU Union. And I'm rattling off all of these people for the simple purpose, I think leadership, it takes a village to get things done. You can't go in to these legislative bodies and think that your idea is the sole idea. You gotta, you have to work with people. And I have the leadership experience and the qualifications where I have worked with people to get things done. And these people have endorsed me and has said, you know, I'm going to come along that ride with you to help make your community better. And I think that's what makes me the ideal candidate is, is how do I use my leadership skills as a businessman, as a community activist, and use those relationships that I've, that I've, that I've built over the years to move our district forward. So I think that's probably the most, you know, without going down a litany of, you know.
Tell me, this is a tough question and I'm, and I'm not sure I ask it the best way, but I'm, I'm very interested in how you view the city of Chattanooga, not, not just Council District Five, how you view it as a whole, because you're, as a leader on the council, yes, you have your constituency in District Five, but you also are part of the board that looks over the whole city. I mean, the, the welfare of the city is part of your, is going to be part of your responsibility. So I have two questions for you in the mirror image. Tell me what you think of Chattanooga as a whole. Like what have you learned? You've been raised here, you've gone to school here, you've worked here. And then tell me what, what you think is the right direction for Chattanooga to be going over the next four years. So first question is, what do you think and your observations? Like I've, I haven't, I think a lot about the city and think a lot about what it is and what it has been and where it's going and where it needs to go. What do you, what do you, how do you come up with answers for those questions?
You know, let me tell you something. That's probably one of the best questions I've had because people are not thinking outside the box as, as far as like, what is the role of a city council person? And people think we only just go to impact our neighborhoods. You're, you're part of a broader body that makes decisions that don't, may not involve your neighborhood or your district, right? And so I think that's an important question. So people understand the civic education behind that. What I think of Chattanooga, honestly, I've traveled a lot and I know you have as well Doug. I enjoy coming home here. I get homesick. I used to could do like seven day trips and I can't do those anymore. I get homesick after five days because I literally enjoy coming back to a community that's not too big, that's not too noisy, there's not a lot of smog, there's not a lot of traffic, even though we're growing, developing city. I enjoy those privileges that a lot of people in a lot of bigger cities don't get to enjoy. This city is progressive in the fact that we love being innovative. We love building. I love the fact that we're a development city where we, we're always trying to add to our skyline. And we're always trying to add to the business community. We're always trying to add to the entertainment industry. We're just always, we're trying to always add things. So when I think about Chattanooga, I really think about, okay, I don't want people to figure out our little well-kept secret here on how well we have it as a mid-sized city. You know, we don't want to be a overpriced Nashville or we don't want to be an overcrowded Atlanta, but we want to have the amenities that those cities enjoy because of their close proximity, proximity to us. And so I enjoy those luxuries, I call them luxuries, and living in a mid-sized city where you have everything. And we have four seasons, we have lakes and rivers and outdoors. And I just think there's a lot of things that other cities don't get to enjoy, that we get to benefit from just even how we're located geographically in the middle of a lot of other cool cities. So yeah, and that's, that's what I think of Chattanooga. I think of Chattanooga as a city that's growing. But I also think of Chattanooga as a place that we make, that as we're growing Doug, we got to make sure that ever the tide is rising everybody. And so that's kind of what I'm thinking, you know? I'm thinking like, yeah, we're good, the city's doing great, but are we all doing great? Who's, who's doing great? So that's kind of my idea. And you asked, the second part of that question is what have I learned?
No, it's, it's where do you think we need to go over there?
Where do we need to go? So yeah, that's a good segue from the last part I just mentioned. Where we need to go, we, we have to start talking more about inclusion. Chattanooga does a really good job in growing and doing good things. But now we have to really start thinking about, we're, we're developing infrastructure, we're developing industry, we're developing business. We really start, we need to start putting a broader focus on as far as where we're going next. How do we develop people? Because we're developing, I remember when the mayor said that the gang issue was a flash mob. And here we are in the Burke administration and now we're on the FBI's top list for one of the most dangerous places to live per capita because of our gang violence issue, right? And so we have to make sure that where we're going, that we're focusing on the development of people or it will grow out of hand, such as we seen with our gang violence problem. And so that's where I'm kind of thinking, it's just like, okay, you've got a great city to live in, but now we really got to start making sure what type of people we're developing here. And do, are we replicating the type of city we live in versus the type of people who live here? And that's, that's a concern of mine as far as where we're going.
Okay. Tell me what your top three issues would be if, if you were elected.
So my top, one of my issues is small business and economic development. I, I just believe Doug that if you want to bring people up, you got to give them good living wage jobs, that you got to invite industry in here. And there's a lot of small businesses that are struggling. We've got to support them and not just our friends and not just people who come in from out of the city. But we need to support the small businesses on Howie 58 and on Brainerd Road. So that's one of my top issues. The other one is affordable housing. And I specifically talk about on my website how we, in order to fight the affordable housing crisis that we've got to address what I call the, the racial inequalities and gentrification. You know, we do really good at development, but oftentimes Doug, development displaces people of color, lower incomes. And so we've got to figure out again, how do we create a, a city that, where people are skilled to take on jobs that are coming in, mostly people of color, African Americans, how they're ready for those jobs, how they have access to those jobs. So you have that equity word coming into play. And I believe Doug that in order to combat the affordable housing issue that people oftentimes talk about in Chattanooga, just make sure people make money and you can live wherever you want to live. You're not going to, can't anybody kick you out if you got money, you know, if you want to, you want to live in Highland Park, Signal Mountain or in East Chat, that's fine. And so I think we have to address those systemic issues first. And so affordable housing is number two. Third is just reducing crime and public safety in my district and in most urban districts. And even in districts like East Brainerd now, where they're having an increase in property theft issues that a lot of people don't talk about. But specifically in my district, you know, public safety is still an issue. We have a lot of shootings. You know, I know, we don't like to talk about that in a tourist city, but we still have issues where African American males who don't have access to opportunities or choosing this lifestyle. And so we've got to make sure that we give them opportunities. And I, and I, and I'm kind of liberally even using the word give. It's, it's, it's so complex, but when we talk about reducing crime, we really have to start really looking at people and not just the weaponry of, that comes with crime, you know, the first thing people holler about reducing crime Doug is get rid of the guns. And I, and I'm not a proponent of that. I know that sounds crazy. I don't, it's just like telling people to get rid of your fork, you know, telling all the people who have diabetes to stop eating, you know? You can't do that. You've got to get to the root cause of what's happening. And we have a lot of trauma in the African American community as it relates to poverty that causes people to make poor choices when it comes to crime. And we have to address that in a better, more comprehensive violence reduction initiative that I don't think was successful. And it hasn't been because if it had been, you know, we would probably see a reduction in crime.
Let me, let me, let me dig in here just a little bit. I've done a lot of these interviews now and this issue comes up. And I think you mentioned something that I think is really important, that when we talk about crime, we're not just talking about shootings, we're talking about a larger issue of public safety.
That's right.
The whole idea that a mom and dad, a granddaddy and grandmama can sit on the front porch and, and enjoy the neighborhood and not have to worry about, about shootings, that there's sufficient lighting, that there's a park down the street that their grandchildren can go play in, that there's, that there are sidewalks that are not cracked and broken and you can't walk on them if you're older because you might fall. And it's, it's all that stuff. It's, it's bringing the neighborhood associations to life and giving them some kind of voice. It's, it's talking about things is, is, is talk about amenities like gardens and, and growing things and growing children and, and all, and all those kinds of things. So are you talking as well, you're not talking about just, because what I heard you say is you're not talking about just about the, I mean, the policing thing is a, is a, is a part that you all can budget and prioritize and things like that. But you're really talking about the, the overall health and public safety of the larger community, or am I putting words in your mouth?
No. So when we talk about public safety, we're talking about the person, the kid who's playing in her yard, who's not in a gang, who's not involved in any criminal activity, but could be hit by a stray bullet because of the crime in the area. We're talking about people who are, who engage in property theft, who are breaking in cars. We're talking about, you know, because public safety is so broad, you just talk about the well-being of people not being impacted by crime. You know, when I talk about public safety, right, we're not talking about policing, which is different. When we talk about policing reform or what have you, but when I'm talking about public safety, I'm, I'm specifically talking about how do we reduce crime and how do we make sure that people are safe? As you mentioned, like from proper lighting or even from car accidents, you know, I think it goes, you know, it's all a part of that umbrella. But when you look at our, at our top public safety issues, it's gun violence. And it's gun violence as it relates to youth development, because most of the people committing violent crimes Doug are young people. So public safety is broad, but I'm specifically talking about, I guess if I could just zero in on one topic under that, I'm specifically talking about gun violence in our city.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. But what I heard you talk about, I thought was that you were also concerned about the larger issue of public safety because, you know, it used to be Dennis, that what you would have been called if elected, one of the city fathers, a city father. And what that means is there's this kind of a shepherding responsibility for the whole community. And that, and that means, doesn't mean the government goes in and does everything, but it means it tries to create an environment where people can pursue their gifts, their talents, their, they can work hard, they can save. They can, you know, they can get an opportunity and it's a place where things are okay for pursuing things or where you can pursue your giftedness and whatnot. But anyway, I'm editorializing a little too much.
I'm enjoying.
You're talking to a lot. I am talking to Dennis Clark. Dennis is running for District Five, which is out in the, I guess you'd call that the.
Brainerd Howie 58.
Howie 58 area. And oh, I need to tell the folks, if you don't know where, what district you're in, if you go to hamiltonflourishing.org, our website, hamiltonflourishing.org, you can actually see a little button that says, don't know where you live, don't know what district you're in. Click it, put in your address and it'll tell you what district you're in and who your current rep is. And so you'll be able to identify what, what district you're in and you can vote. And if, and you can register to vote up to, also on that site, up to February the 2nd. So, and then early voting starts, I believe, on the, February the 10th, February the 10th. It goes through the 25th. So that's the thing. Dennis, I'm curious. COVID has played an oversized role in everybody's life, this, for now a year, and who knows how long it's going to go on. Do you believe that the, the different administrations that have been involved in this, the city, the county, the state, the feds and all have done a good job, or do you believe that it could have been done differently? Maybe not lost so much business, gone to school more, you know, I mean, do you have any thoughts about how this was been? Cause it's been all over the, from my perspective, it's been one day, it's one thing and next day it's another thing.
Very disappointed in how both, and I don't blame, I hate that healthcare is oftentimes politicized because we all have health issues and COVID does not care if you're a Democrat or Republican. And it's been politicized when it should have been strategized better. And I think we have all failed from the federal to the local levels in just preparing ourselves, you know, it's COVID. We've had healthcare crises before Doug, with influenza, with Ebola and with other things. And for whatever reason, we just could not get a handle on it. You know, I was telling people just recently, you know, and now the studies are proving it that in-person learning is safer for our children, that there's lower infection rates by keeping our children in school. And I think we mismanaged that because, you know, we just don't have the, the proper tools, I don't think, or sometimes even the proper people Doug, researching these things and, you know, sometimes we do need, in other words, long story short, we did a lot of knee jerk reactions to this and it, and it hurt a lot of families and hurt a lot of businesses, including mine. I own a transportation company that drives for UTC, Chambliss Center and Carter. And the kids have been out since December the 11th. And, you know, I've taken an economic kid and no one in my company or my clients ever got sick, but you know, we were still out of business because there just wasn't a strategic way to implement some of the restrictions they put on us. And I think as government officials Doug, we just got to be smarter, you know, I don't even, I don't want to be too critical because I don't want to put this on one particular administration or one particular person. But you know, it's just, there's things we could have done to mitigate the spread of Corona. We didn't do well. You know, it's simple, you know, I tell people Corona is more deadlier than influenza, but how do we keep, you know, the flu? We wash our hands, you know, we do simple things without having an impact on the economy it has. And my heart goes out to the people who have passed away because I don't think they had to die if we would have just been smarter and more strategic from the federal level down to the local level. So we'll be experiencing the impacts of COVID for some, for quite some time, probably well into my term as a city council person. And we just have to meet those challenges as it comes. So.
Let me ask you a few more questions Dennis. And we are talking to Dennis Clark, running for Chattanooga City Council, District Five. You mentioned affordable housing and that's been a big thing, but do you have any specifics about what you could do from the city's point of view to incentivize affordable housing?
Yeah, I mean, excuse me. You know, when people come in and bill housing and we give them tax breaks or incentives, which I think is great. Let me just say this, love development, pro-business. But I'm also, I think there's balance and I think we've got to start thinking about equity and that includes affordable housing. Equity meaning that some people can afford to live in certain places. And we've got to figure out how to make a way to bring those people up to an economic level. And we've got to figure out a way, what they can afford to pay to live there, okay? Some people, you've got some places downtown that has mixed usage and they say, well, we got the TIF and, you know, one of our apartments, because of what the market rate is, blah, 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 and it's $1,500. That's not affordable. And so we need to redefine, and I think there's some federal standards that says what affordable is. I think the city council needs to come up with its own guidelines. When we issue those tax incentives that, listen, like this is the federal guidelines, these are Chattanooga guidelines. Which do you want to adhere to? So I think we just need to look into that and just really sprinkle people out. I don't like concentrating poverty in one area because I think that that has a negative impact on communities. But again, you know, I'm all about economic justice when it comes to wage growth. And I think that gets whatever affordable housing, but until we get, get there, we've got to incentivize Doug developers, development without displacement. And we've got to let them come in and say, you know what? This is affordable and we've got to agree to what that amount is because that's the problem. People come in and they make up these rates. I'm like, that's not affordable. So how do you determine what affordable is? We've got to come up with a better formula. And so that's what I hope to do in city council.
Okay. One more question, then I'll ask you to, for your kind of a summary statement. Big deal for any city is jobs and workforce development. Any thoughts about that?
Yeah. So workforce development, we've got to start or stop assuming that everybody's going to go to a four-year college and get in debt. There are some people who make really well with trade skills. We've got to put more, I know there's people who make. We've got to put more, I, I know there's people who make more money. Uh, my, uh, brother-in-law is a plumber, makes a crap ton of money, which is great. Uh, we've gotta invest more in funneling, creating a pipeline, uh, to those trade skill jobs. We just have to, we've gotta get manufacturing back, um, into this country. Um, I hate that we make everything in China, hate it, hate it, hate it. We gotta get those jobs back, but you know what? You can't just ask for them back, Doug, you gotta make sure the people are skilled. And so when I look at workforce development, I wanna focus specifically on creating a trade school. Uh, get that back, get these people into some of these trade schools, and get them qualified, and then, and start recruiting that, those industries to our city. Because we've got the, the skilled workforce here. So that's what I look.
I think the administration that comes up with a task force on workforce development, specifically on. Pulling people into the trades.
Yeah.
Would make a really smart move, because there's gotta be twenty to thirty thousand, forty thousand jobs, or I'd say twenty-five thousand jobs. That are trade kind of jobs, air conditioning repairmen, I mean, you start thinking about them. They're driving trucks every day, and they haven't stopped in the Covid, I mean, they. They're not in the hos- hospitality business, they're, they're out, they're out working, and, uh, with a mask on or not, but they're out working, so. I'm with you on that, I think that's great, Dennis, and, uh, I, I've kind of run out of time, um. Any last words you'd like to say to your, to your potential voters and constituents?
Yeah, I just wanna tell people that there's a lot of choices, um, that people have, and I, and I just wanna encourage people to do your research on this. On candidates, participate in opportunities like Doug is affording us at Hamilton Flourishing. Ask tough questions, not the softball questions, uh, go to my website at dennisclark.org. Um, we've created this, uh, movement called Opportunity for All. And we just wanna make sure that people have the oper- the access to opportunity that this wonderful city has to offer. Uh, and those are the types of policies I'm gonna champion as our, uh, next city councilman for District Five.
Well, great, Dennis, and, uh, we wish you a lot of luck, a lot of, uh, hope you do well, I hope you, uh, I hope whatever the election turns out that you. Uh, continue to be a part of the city, and it's, it's a wonderful place to be, it's a wonderful place to raise a family. So thank you, and, uh, thank you for being on Hamilton Flourishing with us.